Recording in progress.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February twenty-fourth meeting of the governing body. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Dr. Aldrich?
Present.
Mayor Collins?
Yes, I'm here.
Dr. Emmons?
Present.
Mr. Escabel?
Here.
Mr. Leiborn?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Present.
Dr. Rennie? Mr. Royble?
Present.
Mr. Seigrae?
Present.
Mr. White?
Present.
One member is absent. We do have a quorum.
Will you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right. Are there any items a member of this governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich?
Sixteen A, please.
Sixteen A is waste management, okay?
Concur.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Aldrich, seconded by Mr. White. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The consent agenda is approved with item number sixteen A removed.
Six A, public hearing for renewal applications for existing city liquor licenses, retail restaurant, limited retail, resort, bar and grill licenses, microbrewery, satellite distillery, special malt beverage and winery permits filed with the city clerk's office.
All right. State law requires that we renew and review our different liquor licenses annually. And so this public hearing is part of that process and we'll open it up to the public. Is anyone here today to speak to the renewal of our liquor licenses? Anybody in the audience want to speak to that? Did you want to give a brief staff report? Madam Clerk?
Mayor Collins through you, Kylie Soden City Clerk's Office. I would like to just provide a brief update on the annual liquor license renewals. All licensees with the exception of Doghouse submitted applications for renewal this licensing period. It was determined that when the Green Door submitted their renewal application, they will also be required to first transfer the location of their parked license, which is a separate application process. Therefore, their renewal application isn't included with the renewal applications tonight for public hearing. We have been working with the licensee and have received all necessary paperwork and the public hearing for both the transfer of location and renewal will be held at the March tenth city council meeting and I can have any question, answer any questions you may have.
And Madam Clerk, on the Green Door, we still have time in order to do this process and still get them through the process.
We do, Mayor, through you. This will still meet the end of March deadline to get that all done for them.
Very good. Again, we'll go out to the audience. Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Comments? All right. How about from the governing body? Anybody? Dr. Aldrich?
Mayor Collins through you. I would like to know if all of the licenses that have, are currently up for reapproval or renewal are approved. What will be our tally of licenses that we have left and of which types?
Madam Clerk?
Mayor through you. We will have, you know, of course, we are at our limit for retail licenses. There aren't really any other limits on licenses except for Bar and Grill, of which we will have, once we get back the one from the Dog House, since that business closed, there will be five available.
A follow-up question?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Collins, or a comment? I, so that my colleagues know, I have asked our city clerk for a list of any of our applicants or licenses that are being renewed to find out if anyone has any outstanding fines that belong to the city through either BOPU or through waste management or parking, any of those types of things, because I think it's only fair to let all of the liquor license holders know that that is something, an expectation that we have, that those things are paid to the city when they're owed and that that would be something that would come into question when you renew your license. So hopefully, everybody is in good standing in all of those areas and we'll be able to get those taken care of. Thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body? Yes, sir.
Kylie, how many parked licenses do we have parked?
Through you, Mayor. We have, I have that information right here in front of me. We currently have, one, two, three, four, six licenses parked.
Yes, sir.
The status on those, how many are in their second year?
Through you, Mayor. We have, let's see here, Cloud Nine will be reaching the end of their second year this June. The others have until 2026.
Okay. Thank you.
And Ms. Soden, the Cloud Nine is not one we can give to anyone else, right? It's a special one just for the airport.
That's correct.
Yep. Anyone else in the governing body? All right. Hearing none, the purpose of the public hearing has been met. We'll assign this item to the finance committee, which will meet next Tuesday, correct?
Yes. Number seven, ordinance third reading amending various sections of chapter fifteen point zero eight, fifteen point zero nine, fifteen point ten, fifteen point twelve, fifteen point sixteen, fifteen point twenty-two, fifteen point twenty-four, and fifteen point twenty-six of title fifteen, buildings in construction of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, updating specified building code requirements and making technical corrections as further specified.
All right. This is our annual, or maybe not quite annual, but many of our building codes as required by state law. When the state adopts new building, international building codes, we have, I think it is six months in order to adopt those. And so this is our process to do that. This time, we'll go out to the audience. Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this ordinance before us on building codes? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Seigrae?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
It's been seconded by Dr. Aldrich. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Escabel?
Aye.
Mr. Leiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Royble?
Yes.
Mr. Seigrae?
Yes.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Number eight, on page two, ordinance, third reading, amending various sections within chapter eight point twelve, international fire code adopted of title eight, health and safety of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, updating the addition of the international fire code adopted by the city and further amending as specified.
As in the last one, this one is for the fire codes as required by state law. We'll go out to the audience. Does anyone here want to speak to our amending of the international fire code? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Seigrae?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seigrae?
I move to amend by substitute dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. So we did have a substitute in committee and basically what it did, it grandfathered folks who have an existing solar system. We had a concern that we were updating, allowing firefighters to be able to get a ladder on the roof and then be able to step off onto that roof for safety. But it would be really hard on people who have existing systems, so there's a grandfather clause. Want to know if anybody wanted to speak to that grandfathering of existing systems? From the audience? Hearing none. How about from the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The substitute is adopted. We're back on the main motion. Comments from members of the governing body? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Seigrae?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Emmons?
Aye.
Mr. Escabel?
Aye.
Mr. Leiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Royble?
Yes.
This ordinance is also approved on third and final reading as amended.
Number nine, ordinance, third reading, amending section eight point twenty-four point zero two zero of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, clarifying and further regulating the installation of above-ground tanks and containers as specified.
All right. Our recently adopted fire code changed tanks and containers and we had other places it was mentioned, so this cleans that language up in our ordinances. Is there anybody who wants to speak to the fire code and the way they handle tanks and containers? From the audience? Hearing none. Mr. Seigrae?
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich?
Mayor Collins through you. While we were in committee, it, the conversation did come up about that propane use in the city for heating purposes is not allowed. But we have been annexing a lot of rural properties where propane tanks may be being used as their primary heat source. And so I would just like to make sure that somewhere between the annexation process and the fire department's ordinance change that we're aware of that as a community and as a city and that we're going to align our ordinance to make sure that that happens or that there's some notification when properties are annexed into the city that are using propane as their primary heat source, that that doesn't go without some sort of notification that that is something that we don't allow in the city, once that grandfathering piece has expired or been removed.
Anything else from the governing body? Mr. Mason? Did you want to speak?
Were you asking for that to be addressed? Mr. Mayor through you. Oh, okay.
Nope. Mr. Leiborn?
I'd like it to be addressed.
Come back up, Mr. Mason.
Mr. Mayor, Bob Mason, Cheyenne Fire Department. What was the question?
Basically, just a concern that as we annex properties, if there's an opportunity where one of those properties may use propane as their heat source, we don't allow those, so that there's good communication through that process. I don't know if there's a question. It was just basically making sure that the fire department was aware of that.
Well, I think, I think there has been some concern raised about that, because the belief was nobody was using propane to heat, because you're not allowed to use propane typically in the city of Cheyenne, but those individual, those places that are annexed in that are currently operating on propane, I'm assuming grandfathered in, so to speak. I would have to get with, planning could probably voice more on that since they're more deeply involved in the annexation process, but it's probably something we need to start paying closer attention to.
I think that was Dr. Aldrich's ask, was just publicly saying, we need you guys to get together and make sure we have a plan, because it's someday going to happen.
Yes, and that has been in the works, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Royble?
Yes.
Mr. Seigrae?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Emmons?
Aye.
Mr. Escabel?
Aye.
Mr. Leiborn?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
This ordinance is also approved on third and final reading.
Number ten, ordinance, second reading, repealing the provisions for the paid on-street parking districts program of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, further amending the regulatory authority governing parking in Cheyenne and abrogating any on-street parking district designated by resolution of the governing body.
All right. In the end of last year, there was an ordinance that would create a paid on-street parking program and this ordinance would actually repeal that. And so at this time, we'll go out to the audience and if anybody wanted to come speak to us, this is the time. Please come forward. Identify yourself for the record. You're going to have to turn that microphone on. And folks, we're going to limit most comments to three minutes, if you would please, so.
My name is Maren Stulp, and it won't take three minutes.
Got it.
I am aware that you guys have figured out something to do with parking and I know some people that really don't like that idea. And this is what I came up with. To do a little bit of history of mine, I'm going to be seventy-six in June and I was born and raised here in Cheyenne. The meters then were put strategically on each block. I don't know how far apart they were, but they were probably each parking spot. And you put in a nickel or a dime or a quarter. A quarter would pay for two hours. And then if it run over and the meter maid hadn't come, you go put a couple quarters in so you could stay there. But, and that's kind of cheating, but the way that we did it then, they were, yeah, the meters were like on the west side from Eighteenth Street on the west side of the police department to past Warren Avenue. And I don't know, probably Lincoln Way up to the Capitol Building. And you put your money in and the people that we have now that come and mark the cars, they were the meter readers, and they didn't come back at three o'clock, so they come before dark and emptied out the meters. I don't think we need to do anything more with that quarters. Let's pull out the old ones and put them into use now, if they're archived. We don't have to have two quarters be two hours, because of the fact that things are more expensive now.
So you prefer quarters over apps on your phone, huh?
No, because I don't have any apps for a phone.
That's my point. Okay, I understand.
Yeah. There are people that don't have a computer. I don't have a computer. I don't have a cellphone. They don't like me. And so what am I going to do? If they need to pay for their parking, they can go down here to the police department and buy a permit. But that permit is not limited to, I get parking spot A on Seventeenth and Capitol Avenue. No. You get to pick, you have to take what's there. And if it is overrun, then you get to pay the fine. Now, another little bit of history, I was married in nineteen sixty-nine and I opened up the glove compartment and it was full of parking tickets. My late husband worked for Taylor Pontiac and he decided he was too good to have to walk a block to work. So every time he got a parking ticket, he'd stick it in the park and it... We were almost towed twice before I told him, he's not going to do that anymore. Now, my suggestion is, let's just go ahead and work with the quarters. We could adjust the price. But if it's overtime and they get a ticket, they pay it.
Yes, ma'am. Your time's up, okay? You said you're going to be done in three minutes and look at you, used every minute of it. I'm proud of you. It's great to have you here. Thank you.
I had another, I had another way to get it done. I got, I got money coming to the state.
Can you tell it quick?
Yes. If you don't pay your tickets, not only do you have to pay the ticket, but you have to pay a fine. If that doesn't work, your car gets booted and/or towed. You have to pay for towing, plus a fine, plus the tickets. And if you're not a good boy or a good girl about it, you lose your driver's license.
Ouch. I like that.
We're grownups. We're supposed to obey the law.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the history. Who else is here to speak to us today? Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Council. Last time I spoke on this...
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, my name is Exie Brown and I live in Ward Two. And last time I spoke, I did mention one example when it came to the parking, paid parking, that one of the cities, Providence, Rhode Island, they were going to lose money. They lost money actually on this program and not thirty minutes later, a couple of those here on the council mentioned that the city of Cheyenne was actually going to lose money on this program, which begs the question, why would we have a program and pay for a system that we are going to lose taxpayer money on? With that, I actually, I, she actually took some of my thunder on this, because one of the things that was also brought up was the fact that it was mentioned several times that some of the biggest perpetrators are the business owners and the employees parking in those parking spots in front of their businesses, several of which who have multiple parking tickets. And the city, from what I remember from that meeting, has written off tens of thousands of dollars in parking tickets. So the problem isn't necessarily the parking itself. I think it's the enforcement and we need to work on that enforcement. And I agree with, with the lady that just previously spoke, that we need to either use a boot, tow the vehicle. I would even say you could even send those parking, unpaid parking tickets to the, to the county clerk's office and when somebody comes to register their vehicle to get relicensed, they don't get relicensed, or they pay those parking tickets in addition to getting their registration. So there's several different ideas that I'm sure this council can come up with on how to enforce it, but it's not necessarily a parking problem. I think it's an enforcement problem. And so I am here speaking in support of repealing the parking district program. And I know several people that I have talked to, not only in my neighborhood, but throughout town, that support the repeal of this as well. So thank you for your time, sir.
Brown, if I could, just, our current parking program does not make money.
Correct.
We subsidize it. And, you know, I think this governing body is okay with that. We're not, we're not doing parking enforcement to make money. What we're trying to do is to get the cars to move, come do the business they need to do and move, because, you know, we have other customers that want to come downtown. If employees are taking all the parking spaces, how are these businesses going to survive without customers? And so we do parking enforcement, basically, to try to get compliance with our parking rules. It's not about making money. Our goal would be to not have any parking tickets given and just people doing what needs to be done. We do boot cars. We tow cars if we find them that have excess parking tickets. We're doing all of those things. And we actually hired a, or did a study because I thought maybe it'd be better to privatize this. You know, the private companies that run parking, a really, really good one, gets about seventy percent of parking tickets collected. We're over ninety percent. We're one of the best in the country as far as collection of parking fees. So we learned from that, that we don't need to hire a private company, that our team does a great job, that Cheyenne people are good at paying their bills and, and we're doing well. The problem is, is that we just have a lot of activity downtown. Activity downtown is a vibrant area and there's just not enough parking. And, you know, to try to keep those parking spaces moving, that's what our, our parking enforcement folks do, so. So I appreciate you being here tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Who's next?
Mayor, City Council. My name is Astrid. I'm the owner of the Plains Hotel and Hotel Frontier Apartments downtown. Just on the theme of antique and how things used to be, I hope I have enough of these to pass around. It shows Cheyenne in the nineteen forties with a hundred and fifty percent more parking than we have now by judicious use of diagonal. So I'll just send that around for a grin. You know, there are more ways to skin a cat and think through a problem. We do need to do traffic quieting. My main reason for standing here is to say that I want to make sure that what we're doing is supportive of our downtown's vibrancy and the success of all the vendors, the pedestrians. Don't have anything more to say, other than I'm absolutely in favor of please repealing the, the current motion for paid parking. Thank you.
Astrid, it's nice to have you here again tonight. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Corey Lathery. I'm here speaking on behalf of many of the hundred and thirty downtown stakeholders who recently signed a petition and also then gathered four hundred and sixty customers, customer letters requesting repeal of paid on-street parking ordinances. Thank you to those in the governing body for listening to our input and thank you to the DDA for their support of this repeal. You have heard from us a lot over the last several weeks and I'm not going to repeat much, but boots-on-the-ground stakeholders have provided testimony based on their experiences of operating a business downtown, their daily customer interactions, history, and daily presence in downtown at their businesses. Testimony has been heartfelt, passionate, and even fearful, based on the collective perception of the fragility of downtown businesses. We aren't here asking only for repeal. We are also requesting recommendations made in multiple studies conducted since twenty seventeen be implemented. And while all the recommendations in these studies have merit, we have requested five that have been recommended across the board as the first priorities in improving downtown parking. As a group, we remain committed to doing all we can to create a vibrant, welcoming downtown and look forward to partnering with the governing body and the DDA to make that a reality. Thank you so much.
Corey, thanks for all you do for downtown. Appreciate you being here. Who else would like to come speak with us? Please.
My name's Scott Hahn and I represent the Elk Lodge number six sixty, which is located in the heart of downtown and has been since nineteen oh one. Our lodge, as I spoke at the last time, so I'm not going to try not to redo everything, but has parking issues to get our members. We have six hundred and eighty-eight members, trying to get them in and out of the building, et cetera, without an additional hoop of trying to use an app or any other things that can do. We do a lot of fundraising with our patrons and with the public that come in. And recently, or just now, apparently there's the two youth, I'm probably speaking out of turn, but there's two youth baseball softball groups or leagues and they're merging them into one. So there's going to be between seven hundred and eight hundred youth of Cheyenne in one group and we're trying to do a fundraiser to help with that group, too. So we do fundraisers. We, you know, we just don't have just members. We have public that we try and have come in and, and entertain and what they do in there helps various places in town, whether it be the, the food pantries or the Camia Shelter or numerous other things like the youth baseball and everything else. So again, our organization is, is in favor of this ordinance and repealing the resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else?
Mayor, members of the council, Charles Bloom, Planning and Development Director. We serve as the liaison to the Downtown Development Authority Board and at their meeting on Thursday, the twentieth, during the regular meeting, they voted unanimously with six yes, two absent to support the ordinance to repeal the downtown parking regulations.
Thanks for the report. Good evening, Glenn. How's Mr. Garrett tonight?
Fine, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council here. Yes, my name's Glenn Garrett and we've lived in Ward One since the last century here and we've, and I've had an office in downtown for almost forty years here. And over, over that time, I've watched parking problems arise and solutions created in this. And here we are again, but there are, there's a couple of things that are true about downtown. Downtown will always have a parking problem and I think I've explained that before. And there is not enough parking in downtown Cheyenne to meet the current standards for retail, office, and all the floor spaces down... retail, office, and all the floor spaces down there. But there is a solution and that is to maximize the parking that we've got here. And what I'd like to propose here to, excuse me, to have the city, through the DDA, through the reserve funds earmark $500,000 to be put to the use of improving and enhancing the Spiker Garage. This is something that I've noticed in these sessions here that both sides seem to agree on, that the Spiker Garage has problems. And I think the problems, one, the most, that most people see is that the upper levels, the upper two levels and the roof are hardly ever used, they're vacant. And then there is the bigger problem of perception and the perception that it's not safe. And a lot of the things that have come up in that regard are cars racing through the structure, these motorcycles, homeless people in there, people from CTC hiding cigarettes in there. And there is this perception and then you have an article in the paper last month on the 23rd that the headline was Couple Held Gunpoint in a Robbery. And if you read that article a little ways, it is in the Spiker Garage. That will take a long time for it to go away. I only have 20 seconds. But I urge you to repeal this, Dan, so that we can not experience, experiment with the, with people's livelihoods and play roulette with a six shooter and three bullets. Thank you.
Nice imagery. Hi, sir. I see you, Jennifer, I'll get to you. Please.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is Caleb Wilkins. I have a business downtown approximately 10,000 square feet and along with almost all other businesses downtown, not nearly enough parking to support it. I am glad that we all seem to agree that we have a common problem and that is parking in downtown Cheyenne and I'm glad that we're all working towards a common goal of fixing it. I believe, as I believe 100% of the people who have spoken tonight, that this ordinance for paid parking is not the solution. I'd like to bring two simple examples that have affected my business. I own a law firm and many of our clients are from out of town or elderly. And we have done a straw poll of a couple hundred clients over the last few months and so far, we've had some real pushback in terms of using an app. Our elderly clients just simply aren't capable and my clients from out of state have no intention of downloading and setting up an app. I don't think this is necessarily a demand problem only, but more of a supply problem. I've seen numerous studies and Mr. Garrett and Ms. Lori have probably presented it better than I will tonight, but there are options such as a refresh on the public garages. I would also suggest potentially increasing supply of parking by new striping and more efficient use of on-street parking. An additional option that would affect my business is I know the garages themselves are operating significantly below capacity. This means that we have the ability to push people there. Rather than using a stick, I would propose a carrot. I know, like myself with my business, we pay for off-street parking. This means that there's room on-street for our clients. I believe many businesses, if they were given even a small incentive, even for a temporary period of time, would be willing to implement policies to push their employees to the garages, even if that meant a little bit longer of a walk. So I'd certainly encourage this body to repeal the paid parking ordinance and I'd be in favor of the repeal here today. Thank you for your time.
Caleb, thanks for being here. Anybody else? Hi, Susan.
How are you? Mr. Mayor and Council, Susan Allen, Hawthorne Tree, 112 E 17th Street. I don't want to speak too long, but I will just want to repeat a couple of things. I think there's been a lot of ideas floated tonight, which are great, and I think that maybe in the future time, we could maybe look at some of those ideas, but for now, I think we need to look at what's on the table and that is the repeal of this ordinance. I don't think it's going to work now, I don't think it's going to work in the future. And so I just want to say, I think we need to stick to that and look at maybe some ideas and some work sessions in the future. Lastly, before I started a business, I used to travel quite a bit and I spent a fair amount of time in Fort Collins. I've spent quite amount, quite significant amount of time in the parking garage down there and I have never once not felt safe. Partly because of the capacity, it's always full, there's always people milling about and here I go with an idea in the future. But I do support trying to bring the garages up to capacity by incentivizing it for employees and businesses downtown to see not only more revenue for the city, which I'm not opposed to, I don't think you guys are trying to be punitive in any way, but I do think that we, if we had more people, the safety of that lot might be a little bit better. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Jennifer, who do you have on line?
I believe I have Mr. Sheldon. And Mr. Sheldon, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Allen, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Awesome. Yeah, Allen Sheldon, Ward Two. I'll keep it brief since so many people have already spoken about a lot of the topics. I just wanted to speak in support of repealing the paid on-street parking districts program. That's it.
I like the brevity. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody else? Jennifer, are you done? All right. Hearing none, we'll go to Mr. Seiggrave.
Caught me off guard. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldridge. We'll go to the governing body. Comments from Members of the governing body. Jennifer, you want to push that three minute button again? No, I'm teasing. All right. Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you. First and foremost, I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight to make public comment and who's been engaged in this conversation since December. I recognize that while we, you know, may have misstepped in our communication and our lack thereof, I do want to recognize that the police department and Captain James have put a lot of really, a lot of work into this project. But at the same time, I think that it's important that we recognize and hear what you as business owners have to say. So thank you for gathering signatures, for writing the letters. My hope is that we can repeal this ordinance and that we can move forward with some of the other ideas that have been suggested and that, working together, that we can make sure that we make our downtown remain as viable as possible with as much foot traffic as possible and that we continue to work on this problem together. So I did want to point out that this repeal of the parking also includes amendment that would change that people have to move an entire block face every two hours. I, we have, I believe, last time I checked with our city treasurer, over $250,000 in outstanding parking tickets. And I have to believe that a lot of that comes from people not understanding that when they move their vehicle, that they have to move an entire block face. I think people want to do the right thing and I think that we do have a community that likes to follow the rules and pay their bills. And so I would hope that we would be able to make sure that our expectations are clear and that we've delineated that for individuals and hopefully this repeal of this ordinance and changing, amending that block face rule will help to accommodate that. So for that reason, tonight I'll be a yes vote.
Ms. Rascabel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I just wanted to point out a few things that were in the DDA's public engagement, what we got last year in the surveys. Says which of the following are the reasons you avoid downtown? Select your top three choices, well, parking was number one by 46%. What are the top words you used to describe downtown Cheyenne? Historic, western, and walkable were the top three. And then on the next page, what are the top challenges facing downtown? Well, congestion of cars and people came in at 7%, so it didn't even rank very high at all in that. Under the old system, you know, where someone could just move up a couple feet and that, that system was being abused and then we tried to use technology to take care of this parking issue, which doesn't seem like this town's ready for that technological jump. Maybe when the, the millennials are senior citizens here or when cars can fly, I don't know, but I know when I had my first interview when I was running for city council back in 2017, that having a vibrant downtown was one of the things that I really wanted to support and I believe I've always supported that. And I feel as though that the people are speaking here and the downtown business community is speaking here, for that reason I'll support the repeal.
Mr. Moody.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you again, everybody to come now testify and of course, listening to you because you're our constituents. Definitely an I vote, I am a co-sponsor on this, very proud to co-sponsor it as well. Before I got sworn in, I made my word that I would work on repealing it and I kept my word. And again, as was said before, we want to try to have limited government in this. To me, this is a little bit of government overreach, so I'm glad that we're going to repeal it to step in the right direction because as the saying goes, good intentions create harm and this is one of those aspects. So I'll definitely be an I vote. Thank you.
Mr. Seiggrave.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I think I need to. As a senior citizen, I can operate an app. I guess I'm offended when I hear people say that seniors can't manage this system. I think if I count right, at least seven of us are senior citizens. We all have smartphones. So I don't think that technology is an issue. So I don't think technology is, is the issue here, I really don't. You know, about 25 years ago, I was on the governing body and talk about commitments to downtown. We spent millions of dollars renovating the depot. We spent millions of dollars building the plaza to bring people into the downtown. We spent millions of dollars on the Spiker parking structure, not only to accommodate all of the events that we wanted downtown, but to help you as business people. What we asked you to do was to have your employees park in that structure so that your clients could park in front of your businesses and that has not happened. That has not happened. Your employees park on the street, they go out every two hours and move around and you allow that to happen. Many of us up here are small business owners. We pay for our parking. We pay for our employees to park. That's just part of doing business. But that doesn't seem to happen downtown and I don't quite understand that. This system that we studied for over two years works well in many communities. It really does. I am becoming convinced though, that for whatever reason, the people of Cheyenne just oppose the change, oppose the opportunity to improve. And, and I'm disappointed in that. I want to let you know that two weeks from tonight on third reading, I'm going to bring an amendment that will take the city out of the parking business. I have an amendment prepared to eliminate all paid parking in downtown. We spend over $300,000 a year trying to improve your businesses, improve the parking for you. And that's crazy. With the things that are happening on 24th and Capitol this week, we're going to need that $300,000 because it looks like we're going to take a heck of a hit. So what that will mean is there'll be no meter maids, there'll be no two, three, four hour tickets, any of that thing, if it passes, if it's, if it's approved. And people will park in downtown wherever they want, in the parking structure, on the street, as long as, as long as you're not in a handicap spot or, or in front of a fire hydrant. So why don't we try that? Why don't we give that a shot for a year and see what happens? That's what I'm going to propose to my, to my colleagues here. And just step back from this. As Mr. Garrett eloquently said, parking has been an issue forever. Let's just eliminate, let's, let's get out of the parking business. The other thing I think we all need to realize is that in many, many communities, private parking is, is a business. When I go to a baseball game in Denver, I park in private parking lots and pay a fee. Maybe we need to let the business community handle whatever additional parking needs there may or may not be. Let's let, let's let private industry take care of it. Why are we doing, why are we in this game, spending your money to try to enforce this? It's, it's just boggles my mind. So I'm going to vote no tonight because I do believe in the program, but I'm going to try to amend this in two weeks and just eliminate paid parking. And I would appreciate your support. I hope you think about it. Come up here in two weeks and say, hey, let's give this thing a shot. Let's just, let's, let's go Wild West, let's just see what happens. So thank you very much. I appreciate you all being here tonight.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance on second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading with Mr. Seiggrave voting no.
Number 11, ordinance second reading amending sections 1.4.4, 5.1.4, and 5.7.10 of the Unified Development Code to remove the land use term work camps and prohibit their establishment within the city.
We had a recent development action that came before us that would have seen a work camp installed on the south side of our community and based on some of the testimony we got, we thought that maybe our, the, the sponsors did that, that's probably not an appropriate thing to do inside the city limits. So we have an ordinance before us that would remove the, the worm, word, work camp, that's hard for me to say, and prohibit their establishment within the city limits. And we're going to go out to the audience, see if anybody here wants to speak to that effort. All right, hearing none, Mr. Seiggrave. Oh, it's Jennifer. Thank you for getting the hand up.
Sorry, he was kind of slow to you. Allen Sheldon is, has his hand raised.
Mr. Sheldon.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Sorry to switch from headset to my phone. Yeah, so I just want to speak in support of this prohibiting work camps in town.
All right. Appreciate you. Anybody else?
Thanks.
All right. Mr. Seiggrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldridge. Comments from Members of the governing body.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you. I brought this amendment for, or this ordinance change forward because there was a recognition when we were approached by a developer that this wasn't the only area that would have allowed a work camp or man camp in our community that was being proposed by that developer. In researching some zoning areas, our planning office found other zones that also included this language in the allowable uses. And by implementing this ordinance change, it would assure that no man camps or work camps would be established within the city limits. So I definitely think that with our affordable housing issues and attainable housing issues that there is a need for this, I'm just not convinced that it needs to be within the city limits and in near relationship to our elementary schools, Boys and Girls Club, and Head Start. So for that reason, I'll be a yes vote tonight.
Mr. Moody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with my colleague from Ward Three, same thing. We had a lot of constituents from that area say they don't want this, is there a way to repeal it? And we came forward with this, so definitely thank my colleague from Ward Three. I'll speak yes vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the ordinance on second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number 12, resolution approving the 2024 Cheyenne DDA Plan of Development presented by the Downtown Development Authority of the City of Cheyenne.
All right, for the last, maybe not quite two years, we had a-- All right, for the last, maybe not quite two years, we had a, um, a group Logan Simpson who has been working, uh, to create a new downtown development, Plan of Development. And, uh, at this time, we'll go out to the audience, see if anybody wants to speak to that effort. Mr. Bloom.
Mayor, Members of Council, Charles Bloom, Plan and Development Director. First of all, I just want to touch base real quick on what was included in your agenda packet. We've been really trying to whittle down the final, final version of this Plan of Development. There are a couple of changes that were requested based on the public hearing. Those changes have been made and they're outlined in the update memo. Also in the update memo, it noted that there is a, there was going to be a graphic change to page number sixty-one. It was literally the addition of one word at the top and one word at the bottom of this blue square. Those reflect the items from the implementation, uh, table in matrix in the back. We do have copies of that page that we would like to, um, essentially include in that substitute that was presented to you all today. Um, so it was, was noted for everyone. I also would like to introduce our lead consultant, Cameron Gloss, who is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the plan and its preparation and what we have been doing for approximately the last eighteen months to ensure public engagement and good planning of our downtown. I'm open for any questions that you may have regarding this and the packet.
Any questions for our staff? Thank you, Charles. Please come forward.
Mayor and Members of Council, Astrid, owner of the Plains Hotel. Um, I really appreciate that in the ten years I've been here that I've seen three of these, um, surveys come through. And in each and every one of them, I don't quite get that we are looking carefully at the downtown and the historic district. I appreciate that this is a little late. The horse is out of the barn. I appreciate Mr. Gloss very much. Um, but I just feel like we have not looked at the fundamentals of downtown so that we can make sure that we're supporting everything we can. That would be photo, uh, cameras to capture pedestrian traffic in maybe four locations. Um, and also to look at, uh, the tax receivables from ten years ago, five years ago, and today, to see if we have different kinds of businesses, whether a lot of them are going out. So I just want to say I really appreciate all the effort that's gone in. But it feels like in seeing three of them that we're missing some core, um, some core investigations of downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Astrid. Anybody else want to speak to the Plan of Development? Brian, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Brian Bowe, I serve on the, uh, all volunteer DDA board. And I was also on the task force that, uh, we put together to work with Logan Simpson and the, and the staff, um, to, to create this plan. As the DDA continues to rebuild after several years of transition, um, this plan will be the foundation, uh, for strategic action and serve as a guide for future, uh, decision-making. Uh, the cost to develop this plan was funded through the DDA Millevi funds. And, um, so it just, there was some question about that last time, so I wanted to clarify that. As we, uh, have now hired another new DDA administrator, we feel like the board and the new DDA administrator and the continuation of the two other staff members of the DDA, um, will really be well-served with, with this plan and be able to use it to make decisions moving forward. As well as, uh, you know, having it as a guide to take action with, not just to plan more with, so. Um, you know, the DDA has many partners with us, uh, in the development and the successful development of downtown. And, uh, through this plan, uh, we hope that we as a DDA, uh, as a board and as a staff, uh, will be able to become a robust, uh, point of connection and resource for those who want to grow and build downtown together. I think that's all I have.
Brian, thanks for all your investment in downtown. Appreciate you being here tonight. Hi, Ms. Volk.
Good evening. Wendy Volk with the Downtown Development Authority. I'm the vice chairman and a board volunteer also. I would like to commend Mr. Bowe and the members of that task force. So this Plan of Development is a guiding document. It has short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals. It's a fluid document. Uh, I want to just commend the effort that went into it was consolidating fifty different plans. Not fifteen, but five zero number of plans to bring all of the historical information that has occurred in our downtown into one guiding document for a future plan. This was a recommendation that Mr. Laborn made to the Downtown Development Authority Board to go forward with this. Our board concurred. And the eighteen months of planning and the public comment was tremendous. I do think it is imperative that anyone that either operates a business in downtown or owns a building in downtown to stay actively engaged with our Downtown Development Authority. We appreciate feedback. We appreciate people that want to volunteer and serve on our board. Um, but I just want to say I am very proud of this document and I would appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for all you do. Anybody else? Yes, Jennifer. Who do we have?
Danika Morozinski, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, Danika.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. Uh, Danika Morozinski, downtown business owner and DDA board member. Also a member of the task force, um, that worked with the consultants to fill this document. Uh, I don't want to repeat too much of what Brian or Wendy already mentioned, but I'd like to also thank the consultants, the DDA staff, and fellow DDA board members who have gotten the Plan of Development thus far. Um, I'd also like to acknowledge and thank all of those who have invested in and worked to improve downtown over the years. I think it's easy to forget what has come before us and to lose sight of how far we've come. The DDA has gone through a lot of changes over the past few years. And as a board, we were struggling to see where to go next. This Plan of Development is a map for us to move on and hopefully a guiding document for other stakeholders and partners. This is also a required document for us as an organization to define our purpose and mission. We're moving forward with developing implementation plans next that will further define how we move some of the different items forward in the plan. Uh, many of you know, but I want to stress that this plan is an effort to consolidate and bring the many, many plans from years past together and off the shelves. While some of the items in the plan are no doubt aspirational and not all the questions have been answered down to every last detail, we plan to use this living document to move downtown forward on past efforts and ideas. This plan is going to require extensive partnership and collaboration with stakeholders, uh, city departments, downtown business owners and property owners, Visit Cheyenne, NPO, City Planning, Public Works, Historic Preservation, CPD Leeds. And I'm sure there's others that I'm missing at the moment, but also equally appreciated. Um, this plan is not meant to be a demand on everyone's resources. It's meant to be, as I said, approached collaboratively and with a spirit of working together to continue to improve our historic downtown. Uh, we as a board are also working towards implementing a communications policy to better connect with stakeholders so that the DDA can build back some of the trust from shareholders and partners that has been shaken over the past few years during all of these changes. Um, but thank you guys for your time and consideration on this.
Thanks, Danika, for your service on the board. Anyone else in the audience? All right, Mr. Seigra.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to adopt and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seigra.
There have been many changes, uh, to this document that we're considering tonight. And including, um, in this fourteen-page memo from Director Bloom. But the resolution has never been changed, so I'm going to make a motion to amend. Mr. Mayor, I move to amend by substitute DDA Plan of Development, to include the recommendations from the Planning Commission and from the City Council regarding parking, walkability, inclusion of the whole, creation of a work plan, reference to the grant programs, and include additional web links and appendix two as provided by Director Bloom in his memo dated February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldrich. All right, we have a substitute and I think Mr. Seigra explained it better than I could. So we'll go out to the audience if anybody had any last comments before we move on. Anybody? How about from the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the time and the energy. I can hardly see you over there, uh, from our consultants that they've put in on this, as well as from all of the members of the DDA. Um, thank you for the time that you give, um, in addition to trying to run your businesses and, um, keep those, the downtown going. Um, really appreciate all that you guys do. Um, I think that it has been a hard couple of years in transition and I'm really excited that we have a new administrator and that, um, hopefully we have a fresh start with the implementation of this plan. But I think that this amendment will, uh, really help to, um, really lay out what the, the next steps are. And so, uh, for that reason, I fully support this amendment and this, uh, new plan with the amendment.
Mr. Seigra, on that amendment, you know, Mr. Bloom talked about that page sixty-one, um, where we added the two lanes. Is that included in your, uh, uh, your motion? Or could we make that a part of your motion?
Yes, it is. That's the walkability.
Okay, thank you. So making sure we, we're included that. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Laborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I speak in favor of this amendment and, uh, primarily because I was very involved in it along with some other people on the council, some other people in the community. Uh, the meeting before the Planning Commission really raised a number of questions that led to the adoption, uh, that will be adopted here of the work plan, which is an initiating start of a pretty large and ambitious Plan of Development. But you want to start off right and we did this afternoon with a meeting we had with the consultant and, uh, members of the city staff, where we talked about beginning at the very beginning of all this, which is snow management, which we've all seen in the past few days can be improved. And certainly we have improved over the past, uh, few years with the clean and safe cruise ability with their new equipment, with their ability to deal with it. But the point is, we still have to make sure everyone understands their responsibilities in snow management. We also talked about and is included in this is parking. So I think you're going to see some of the things that, uh, we talked about and were discussed earlier under the parking repeal that are going to offer opportunities for people to participate and really make some changes that, and go back and look at some of the past practices that worked a little better. So that's, uh, that's, I believe that's very worthwhile and is a good start to this matter. So I speak in favor of the substitute. Thank you.
And also on the substitute, Mr. Seigra? On the substitute? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Did you want to speak to this?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I is concur with my colleague from Ward One. Uh, we definitely talked about it and parking is an issue, so I'm very happy it's included. Thank you.
All right, anybody else on the substitute? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the substitute is adopted and we're back on the main motion. Last comments from the members of the governing body. Mr. Seigra.
Mr. Mayor, as a former DDA board member and chairman, um, I, I very much want to support this. I, I also want to say that I've been very disappointed in the DDA, particularly the last few years. Uh, it seems like they've lost their focus at times and, and their mission. If this document provides that for the DDA, uh, then it's well worth the money spent. If it's put on the shelf and collecting dust has many, what, what do we hear, fifty? Fifty, not all DDA, but fifty different plans. Um, if it's put on the shelf, then it will be money wasted. And I think it's our duty as members of the governing body to hold the DDA to their, to their goals. And there's so many things that come in front of us that that tends to get lost along the way. And somehow, we need to keep that in focus. Um, I love Mr. Garrett's idea of helping improve the parking garage. I think that's something very visible that the DDA can do and take credit for. I think it's be very helpful. We've heard over and over and over that the garage is a, is an issue. We have made some improvements. We have emergency calls and all the things you've heard in the past. But, um, if the DDA wants to help the city improve the garage, uh, I think that would be fabulous. So I'm going to support this. I hope it's the catalyst that keeps the DDA moving forward. Uh, because as we've heard, we really need it. Thank you.
Ms. Laborn, did you want to speak to this?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in regard to my colleague from Ward Two's comments, um, I'm pleased to report that at the DDA board meeting, uh, last Thursday, I was, uh, pleased and impressed with, uh, the board members themselves speaking up and wanting to assume more responsibility, thanks to this report. I mean, it clarifies, uh, a number of things. I think the communication policy that was discussed would have gone a long way in regard to the understanding of that, uh, parking program that we just, uh, got rid of. But it really is, uh, a time when we should use this opportunity of the organization of the downtown property owners and business people to really listen to them and make some reasonable changes and reasonable expenditures that can bring results and that can demonstrate that we are really, uh, very interested in this. And I think one of those, uh, points is our program that's been developed to, uh, improve the sidewalks, the tripping hazards. And that's something that's underway and I think that we can work on diligently, uh, this summer. So I am very interested. I was, uh, referenced earlier as the initiator of this. But, uh, I think when we look back on it, we can say that those fifty progr- plans were difficult to implement. And this one's going to be difficult to implement too. There are economic changes that the city has no control over. There are, uh, all sorts of, uh, changes that happen in the commercial enterprises. There is a real need for, uh, understanding of our very ambitious programs here on the west side. So, um, I want to be realistic. But I do want to say that, uh, our meeting this afternoon, which I believe came about as a result of our meeting with the Planning Commission and our discussion of the necessity of that work program identifying those first specific steps, was a case of listening. It was, uh, the DDA and the consultant listened and responded. And I think that's, uh, something many of you know I have been, uh, critical of in the past. It, it's not an easy responsibility, but it is something that, uh, many other communities manage. Uh, manage better than us, frankly. So I also want to point out that the memorandum of understanding that the City of Cheyenne has with the Downtown Development Authority is coming up for review, uh, this spring. And I think that'll be an opportunity for us to look at these programs and in my opinion maximize the opportunity of our new, uh, staff person here to take the, take the reins and really, uh, make sure that this is implemented. Because, uh, obviously, we all know Cheyenne has opportunities, other communities don't. Uh, we have a downtown that's historically vibrant with some major challenges. We have, uh, the Plaza and the Depot. I am working right now with, uh, Jason Sanchez on some issues in the parking structure and some ways that we can improve that. If we all work together, uh, as was the case when I was a youngster and downtown was a vibrant downtown without a lot of big boxes on the exterior, it is us getting together, prioritizing these matters. And I'm sure you'll be hearing more, particularly members of the council, about our snow management efforts, which- about our snow management efforts, which is uh, doable. So let's find the things that are doable. Let's make some attention uh, to these programs and uh, again, I, I'm sure I'm not the only person here that appreciates the changes in the uh, I wouldn't exactly call it last minute, but how about timely? It was, it, it the consultants listened, the board listened, and we got a better product. I look forward to uh, continuing that effort and uh, believe that we should adopt this tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else in the governing body? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution is adopted as amended. Thank you.
Next item is number sixteen A on page three. Contract modification number three to contract number seventy-five thirty-one between the city of Cheyenne and Waste Management for Recycling Services through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-six.
All right, we have a contract with Waste Management to handle our curbside recycling program. And I'd go out to the audience if anybody had any uh, comments about the contract modification to add another year and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that contract. Hearing none. Mr. Laborn.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee. Oops, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve and amount to not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I so move.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body? Dr. Aldrich.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Collins for you. Um, I just uh, was curious. Our, I know that in the past, we've um, had our director of public works who was able to talk and speak to this, but I know that um, I, I don't know that people in our community always understand that we have a contamination rate of our, some of our trash, and I'm hoping that our director can give us an update on our most recent contamination rate, what that percentage is. And when that happens, uh, ideally, the recycling program, my understanding is, is to conserve space in the landfill. Um, and to make sure that we are the best stewards of the landfill that we can be by recycling what we can. But every time um, someone puts something in their recycling bin that doesn't, isn't recyclable, it uh, contaminates that recycling stream. And then we not only are paying to have it shipped to Fort Collins, is my understanding, to the recycling center, but then we have to turn around and pay the recycling center to um, an additional amount of money for them to take it to the landfill in Fort Collins, so it becomes a really expensive um, off-site landfill for us um, because of uh, individuals who don't um, follow the recycling guidelines. So I'm just hopeful that our director of public works can give us an update as to what percentage of contamination we're currently um, seeing and um, what that uh, equates in dollar amount that we're having to pay additionally for recycling um, that has to be taken to the landfill outs- out of state.
Ms. Nemeczek, welcome.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Vicky Nemeczek, Public Works, to Dr. Aldrich. Um, you're exactly correct. We have a contamination rate or had a contaminate- contamination rate. There was approximately thirty percent. Over the past year, our uh, sanitation transfer station manager has taken steps to provide warning letters to people who are not recycling right, is the way we like to uh, say it. So we have um, we base that on a three-strike-you're-out system. So it was, we give you a warning letter. The next time, we give you a second warning letter and say, next time you're gonna get fined. And then the third time, you got, I think it's a twenty, it's a twenty-five dollars and thirty-three cent fine for contaminating recycling. Since that uh, has taken effect and we've had some time to get, for people to get used to it, the recycling contamination rate has reduced to just about five percent, a little bit more than five percent. So um, it's amazing what you can do with a carrot and a stick. But you, you are right about the, we, we take five things. Cardboard, paper, cans, plastic, and only one, two fours and fives in plastic. And then food grid glass. We were, we had people that were putting wood beams, old fences, uh, can, uh, old coolers, you name the item, they were going in there. So we have cleaned that up, thankfully, with the help of uh, our transfer station and the, our customers. So we have reduced that significantly. Thank you.
And Dr. Aldrich, um, if I could real quick, it also has to be dry, it has to be clean. So like a pizza box that has pizza sauce on it, it's not recyclable, right?
Mayor, that is absolutely correct. Clean and dry. And I would also say one more thing. Please don't use uh, one resource more than it should be used to save another resource that's not worth much. Let's say you have a ranch dressing plastic bottle and it's a number two. Don't use two gallons of water to clean that, clean that thing out, so you can put it in your recycle bin. Because that's just using up one valuable resource for something that's probably not worth cleaning out to, frankly.
Can I get a letter from my wife, please? Cause I get in trouble if I don't clean stuff.
Mayor Collins, through you. I did want to say thank you so much for all the public service announcements that have been showing on uh, Channel Five News, I, around the news hour. I think uh, that and the labels and the stickers that you've provided for the inside of the lids. I just think that our sanitation department has done a really good job of trying to educate people. And um, I hope that we can e- eventually get to a zero percent contamination rate.
Last thing I would say is, you need to, do you need to bag your garbage? But you can't bag your recyclables. If you put your recyclables in a bag, that contaminates it and we get in trouble. So your trash, you bag, because we don't want it blown away. But recyclables, please don't bag those because that becomes contamination. And so if you're talking to folks, please take care of that for us.
You guys are good. Thanks.
You trained us well, ma'am. Thank you. Dr. Newman, did you have? Okay. Anybody else from the governing body?
Mr. White. Mr. Mayor, thank you through you. I just wanted to thank Vicky and, and her staff. She's always been so um, easy to work with regarding this. Recycling's always been kind of a passion of mine and I, I ju- I know that it's all about being good stewards and also saving um, our landfill for as long as we can. Um, I remember when we didn't take glass. And I was on you for a few years on that, and then I, I remember you coming to me after a meeting a few years ago saying, "We're finally gonna take glass." And um, I was pretty excited about that. But um, thanks for all the education. I think sometimes folks forget. You, you did a mailing a few years ago, I know, that went out to every single cus- uh, resident in the city, kind of spelling out what you could and couldn't recycle. And I just think with time, sometimes people, people forget about that, so um, reeducating every couple of years, I think, is very helpful, but to decrease from uh, a twenty-five percent decrease from where we were to where we are now is pretty, pretty astounding, so kudos to staff.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? This contract modification is approved.
Next item is number eighteen A on page four. Voucher report.
All right, is there anybody in the audience or on the governing body that would like to speak to the vouchers? Hearing none, how about for the revenue report? Anybody on the governing body or the audience? All right, next item, please.
Announcement of a public hearing to be held March tenth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM in city council chambers, twenty-one oh-one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting for retail liquor license transfer location application filed with the city clerk's office for F and G Corporation doing business as The Green Door from three oh-one East Lincoln Way to two fifty-five story boulevard, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held March tenth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM in city council chambers, twenty-one oh-one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting for the renewal application filed with the city clerk's office for F and G Corporation doing business as The Green Door, two fifty-five story boulevard, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held March tenth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM in city council chambers, twenty-one oh-one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting for a restaurant liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Frontier Trampoline Park Inc., doing business as Frontier Trampoline Park, thirty-five oh-one East Lincoln Way, Suite B, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement of a public hearing to be held March tenth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM in city council chambers, twenty-one oh-one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting for a restaurant liquor license application filed with city clerk's office for Thompson Weaver LLC, doing business as Parkway Pizza, thirty-seven fifty-three East Lincoln Way, B six, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Other business.
All right, is there anybody here in the audience that came to speak to us under other business? You know, this is just amazing. Look how handsome he looks in his coat and his tie. He leaves his governing body. He comes in and he's dressed to the nines like this. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Good to have you back.
So as you can tell, um, I'm actually Richard Johnson. In this capacity, I am a the ex-officio board member for Habitat for Humanity, and I'm just here to give you a brief synopsis of what took place when we went to Washington DC about a week and a half ago for Habitat on the Hill. Um, where all, or pretty much forty-seven states um, discussed affordable housing. Um, to first to follow up on a conversation that you and I had at a coffee shop. Um, you had asked me in regards to additional funding for the WCDAs. Um, I just wanted to fulfill that obligation um, with Representative Hagaman. She was actually delayed because she was speaking on the floor. Uh, and Senators Lummis and Barasso. Uh, we really didn't get to touch base too much on that topic because we were um, assigned the CEO and Vice President of Habitat for Humanity International, so we were trying to impress two parties at once. So um, I just wanted to fulfill that, but you might want to um, touch base with them because at the conference, they did say that um, currently Congress is working on their twenty twenty-six budget. So you might want to send an email over to our congressional delegates just to see if they can increase that funding to WCDAs. All right, so um, I did prepare my um, statement. Um, so here we go. The lack of affordable housing has been a topic for many years. We have read about it in the mayor's minutes and have heard it discussed in town halls, council and commission meetings, legislative interim meetings, chamber of commerce luncheons, and many campaign speeches. I was recently invited to attend Habitat on the Hill, an annual conference where Habitat for Humanity affiliates nationwide address housing shortage, uh, excuse me, address housing shortages with congressional delegates. During one of the conference courses, we were presented with a graph of where we left our or where we felt our municipality, county, and state placed on success. I explained to a group of about twenty affiliates that I rated our municipality and county very successful. Still, after a few bumps in the road at the legislative level, we required, I advised them, we required a couple of years of education and advocacy to reach our desired goals, but we were on the right course. To clarify this statement, forty-seven affiliates put together presentations addressing specific issues in their localities. Several addressed concerns about their municipal government's unwillingness to communicate their needs with their governing bodies regarding particular zoning issues and requirements for building starter homes. I felt a sense of accomplishment that our governing bodies took the time to address several of these concerns over the last few years by scaling back regulations and working with developers, including our own Habitat for Humanity affiliate. Due to Habitat for Humanity being the only contractor building starter homes in many states, these decisions caused a positive ripple effect on our housing shortage. Habitat of, for Humanity of Laramie County and Habitat for Humanity of Eastern Big Horns in Sheridan delivered educated dialogue to our congressional representatives. As well as Chris Vincent, the Vice President of Government and Advocacy for Habitat for Humanity International, and Jonathan Rickford, the CEO of Habitat for Humanity, who joined us for our meetings with Senators Cynthia Lummis and John Barasso. Dan and Johnny deserve accolades under all of this intense pressure. They generally understand housing difficulties in Wyoming. Of course, there is still work to do. When the Habitat for Humanity executives were discussing with a staffer what they were hearing on Capitol Hill about the US housing shortage, the answer they received was short and blunt. When we visit with town councils and commissions in Wyoming, they advise of issues they are having locally, but we aren't hearing much on the Hill. After we met with Representative Hagaman, I informed her I would request the mayor of Cheyenne and the city manager of Casper to continue having dialogue with her staff on what committees, excuse me, communities would require to assist us with this issue. In my opinion, this will take a village to resolve. In conclusion, we want to thank Representative Hagaman, Senator Lummis and Barasso, and their staff for the courtesy and professionalism extended to us. We all realize that there are no easy answers to continued supply chain issues and inflationary costs of materials. I was incredibly proud that Wyoming did not go to Washington DC with a doom and gloom attitude, and many successful initiatives had taken place locally. I can tell you from the conversations I had with affiliates from Charleston, South Carolina to Yakima, Washington, that success is not out of reach. And we used our municipality and county as examples of what can be done to reach those goals. And so I'm here tonight. We had discussed this when we were in Washington DC, how proud we were of the decisions that city council had made over the last few years in regards to unified development code changes and also our county commission. We also realized, you know, with some of the uh, legislation that was going through recently that did not pass, that we still have work to do. And that was one thing, but to actually go to Washington DC and, you know, there was a lot of doom and gloom amongst the other forty-seven states that were represented there. And from Wyoming, to actually speak highly of what our governing bodies did and give a voice of encouragement, spoke volumes to them. Granted, I'm, you know me, I'm a little bit on ten a lot of the times, but um, I did um, hype up a lot of those people. And so, so yes, I do. This was, um, I talked with Dan about this and we did want to extend our thank you to the governing bodies that you guys really did a really lot of work over the last few years to, to make this happen and your work did not go unnoticed. Um, I do also have one thing that's outside of that scope. There's um, two things actually, and following off on the Habitat for Humanity. Um, I'm sure Daphne will send you all an email um, to invite you to jump into Jules on April fifth. And then uh, corresponding at the, pretty much the same time, Rooted in Cheyenne is offering a tree workshop at L triple C. Um, there, that is no charge, and so you're all more than welcome to attend. And then a thank you also to um, uh, Dr. Aldrich and Councilman Mark Moody. Um, I talked with them in January um, about another fundraiser that I was doing for Rooted in Cheyenne in regards to uh, hoses um, for Rooted in Cheyenne, and they were more than accommodating to um, give me two. It would be remiss of me if I also did not thank the Cheyenne Firefighters Union. Um, they had a vote in February and they dedicated five hundred dollars out of their charitable fund to also help us with hoses in the, especially uh, because a lot of people winterize. So when we do the fall plantings, there's, the bags um, are really hard to uh, fill because the water truck can't reach over the cars and the fence to get to the watering bag from the truck, and so it's accessible to uh, just take it from the, directly from the home. A lot of people put their hoses away, so we're gonna give these team leaders, so thank you. Mark and Michelle for your donation and thank you also to the Cheyenne Fire Department.
You look good, sir. Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from the audience? All right, how about from the governing body? Dr. Aldrich.
Yes, sir. Mayor Collins, um, I just wanted to remind everyone that uh, Zonta of Cheyenne will be having their annual cancel-out event on Friday, March seventh, at the CFD Event Center. And as of today, there are less than eighty tickets left um, for that event, so if you haven't gotten your tickets, please get your tickets and um, are gonna have an excellent speaker from Laramie um, speaking about um, domestic violence from a male perspective.
Anyone else in the governing body? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. We are going to now transition into uh, management labor negotiations with our fire union. So we're gonna take about a five-minute break, let everybody go do what they need to do, and then we'll get started here um, uh, in our negotiations. Thanks all for being here.
Recording stopped.